Ready to go?
We're ready.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, meeting of the City of Beacon zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Haug. I am the Chair of this Board. I'd like to welcome my fellow Board members, our Attorney George, our zoning board and everything, Secretary Mercedes, our new acting building inspector, welcome. And we will be holding a public hearing on one item this evening and then some miscellaneous business to cover. I don't have my normal intro that Montos normally brings me to read off of. So I will say, the, our purpose is to grant relief from the zoning code. And the things that we can consider are five factors. And those five factors are as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. As to whether the benefit the applicant can seek can be achieved through another feasible method that the applicant can pursue. As to whether the requested variance is substantial. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. And then by law, we must grant the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community. So it would be helpful for those applicants and also for the public to attempt to limit their persuasiveness to us, to those factors. As those are the factors that we can consider on this board. What will the order of operations are, we'll open up the public hearing for each agenda item tonight. Really one, we'll do miscellaneous business at the end. And then the applicant will come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Present your application. Will probably be some back and forth questions from the board. We'll then open it up to the public. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on a public hearing item, they will also come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record. And again, if you could speak to those, those five factors, that would be great. And then we will close the public hearing, have a nice heated discussion amongst ourselves and, and vote one way or the other.
It doesn't have to be heated.
It's fun when it is. All right. So that is that. And George, just for some clarity, I think, I think, can you just explain on agenda item number one, before I open the public hearing, the first of the two variances, the first of the two variance requests?
Yeah, so this is for, this is for Sixth Cliff Street. And Corey can obviously chime in if I get anything wrong. But basically what it is, is there are two area variances required. One is for the minimum lot area per dwelling unit in that T district. Because the proposed addition on the second floor of this home is for the purpose of making it a two-family home. It's currently a one-family. Two-family homes are permitted uses there, so we're not reviewing the use. It's just because it's a two-family, I think it's 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit. Which as a one-family, it satisfies, but once it's two, you have to do the division. So what it comes out to is the proposed minimum, the proposed lot area per dwelling unit would be 1631 as a two-family. 2,500 is required. So the variance is for that minimum lot area per dwelling unit. So that's what it is. There's no, it's not like a setback. It's just, you know, conforming with the, the size of the property, taking into account the constraints of the size of the property.
So that, so just, just to repeat what I think he said back to us, so we're all clear. So two families are allowed in this zone. But if you, if you have a two-family in this zone, each unit must be 2,500 square feet or the total must be 2,500 square feet?
Each, the lot area per dwelling unit is 2,500 square feet.
And, and just defining lot area is what?
It's the entire area of the, so what you would do is you would take the area of the lot. You know, what, yeah, and divide it by two. So in the perfect world, if it's a 5,000 square foot lot, you divide it by two and you get to 2,500 and you're good. The idea, I guess, is you don't want basically more lot, more dwelling unit per percentage of lot, right? This is a smaller lot, so I think that's really where the constraint comes from. As a one-family, as a, yeah, as a single-family building, wouldn't be an issue. But because it's two-family, there's that bit of a variance.
So it's not, it's not a percentage then, right? So it's, if this was a...
No, it's not a, it's not a 50% of the lot, you know, it's not that kind of thing.
Yep.
It's just in the code, it's actually in this section, the required square foot. And Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, is it, you look at the zoning district next to it, right? Something like that to figure out what the math is. It's like one-half of the, the zoning district next to it. So it's not a percentage. It's not that it has to be 30% or whatever of the lot area. It's just straight up 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit.
That's required.
Yeah, that is required.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all predetermined, but you know, that's kind of like, the code tells us exactly what the measurement is. The only reason I'm chiming in is because I realize as I'm reading my own letter, to mitigate maybe some confusion is just to really recognize that we're talking about a variance for 869 square feet. It's actually double that amount because it's per dwelling.
Per dwelling.
So reading it, you know, if you just keep reading, you'd think it was just an 869 square foot variance. But technically, it's not two variances. It's just the amount is times two. That just isn't reflected in there.
So it's 25 square feet per lot per unit?
Yes.
That's what you, that's what you need. So that's a city's great way of determining how much you can do on a lot, given its size.
So if you turn that around, it says that you have to have a 5,000 square foot lot to have two units.
Yes.
And not ask for variance.
Yeah, I just chose to write it this way so you could see individually, because it's per dwelling unit, as the language of the code reads. But the way you're thinking about it, big picture is really the way to go.
But, but the funny thing is that neighborhood doesn't have very many 5,000-foot lots. And the variant, the, the zoning regulations allow two-family units. Which is kind of, they're at cross-purpose.
That's one way to not allow them.
If the intention was not to allow them, is to make them legal, but make them legal in a way that nobody can actually do it.
Make them legal and then have them come to us, I suppose.
Yeah, so again, the, the use is not, we're not focusing on the use tonight. It's, it's this square foot per dwelling unit. And it's really a victim of circumstance that the lot is small, right? So I believe the addition is just, the second floor exists. It's just a slight addition to the back of the second floor. So it's not like a whole new second floor, and the applicant can obviously go through it. But there's not a second floor being built. It's a partial addition on the second floor for the purpose of making it two-family. All right?
Right, and before it was a, now it is a single-family, so it doesn't run into these new constraints.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
So it's like 1,700 square feet, two, two few square feet.
1631.
Yeah, 1631.
You got there. Anyway, any, any other pre, pre-questions? All right. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number one? Motion by Montos.
Seconded.
Second by Sel. All in favor?
Aye.
You looked very eager.
My name's David Freeman. I am the architect for the owner. So it is two variance requests. They are kind of separate. So I just want to go through the, the two-family one first, and then we'll go to the variance for the back second. They are, the owners are actually, they own a construction firm. They're doing a lot of work in Beacon. They do want to relocate themselves to Beacon from where they are. They like the city. They bought this piece of property literally for the view from the second floor of Mount Beacon. So however, they should have checked better. They bought it with the understanding that was an accessory apartment already. I walked in and said, "No, it's not," and checked with Bruce Flowers, and he says, "You're right, Dave. No, it's not." So the intent here is to legalize that, to make it into a second floor. It's a 35% variance when you come down to it, so it's to me not a large variance. As you said, all the lots are undersized. It is a smaller lot. We're not going to grow the lot size, so it's about 35, it's a 35% variance. There are two driveways. There are two curb cuts. There is a garage on the left-hand side of the house, so we do have adequate parking for it. We're not changing the front of the house. We are not proposing to change the back of the house right now. The addition is to address, literally, as you said, to make it into a proper two-family. So the front, the lower level would be entered on the right-hand side in the back. The upper level would be entered through the front door. The owner proposes, obviously with their renovation, to change the windows, fix the front porch, make it a little safer. I think that's about it for the two-family.
Is it going to be owner occupied?
Not that it matters to you, but yes, it is. So the owner, I know. So that's the intent. The owner, like I said, they live down in Rockland County right now. They do do work here. If you notice on the plans, there is a large set of windows we're proposing on the back section to look out onto it, onto Mount Beacon. They love it. So their son may move into the second floor, first floor, but that's, you know, that's not, can't be part of the variance essentially. So the intent is for them to live on the second floor. So the second variance is for a rear yard variance. As the attorney discussed, right now, it's placing a second floor on top of the back section of the house, extending the addition six feet. And then the second part of the request is to put a six-foot deck on. So right now, the back section of the house is 12 by 20. It's not a great living space because that's really going to be the two-story living space. So put in a six-foot addition across the back and on the, and a second floor. Get an 18-foot by 20-foot room. That puts us 12 feet from the backyard. And then put a deck on the back, which gets us six feet from the backyard. So that's the request for the second floor variance. It could probably be done with a patio, if, if the board has discussion. But a deck gets a rail, and a rail says to the neighbors, to the bar in the back, and everybody else, please don't come up on my backyard. So that's kind of the intent.
The addition, it's going to be a two-story addition on the back, correct?
Yes.
And how deep? How far does it, it's 18 feet wide.
If you look on the third or fourth floor on the plan, if you go to the backs. So right now, the, right now, the first floor is 12 feet deep. We're going to extend the first floor six feet and then put a second floor on the entire part of it. That's, that's the proposal.
So there currently isn't a second floor over that?
No.
Okay.
So like I said, that's where the view is. So. And then replicate both floors, so kitchen, living areas back there for both apartments. And that's all we have? You know, is it self-created? Yeah, they'd like to live here. Is it an undersized lot? Yes, not at the time. The house was built in 1900. It's basically unchanged since 1900. You can tell as an architect. You know, it's, it's not that different. The side yards are actually pretty good. So that's, that's the good part of it to me, is that the side yards are actually fairly good-sized back from the neighboring properties. So we're not approaching.
So are you proposing a roof deck? Roof deck if, if you can't get the deck deck, the back deck?
We're proposing both right now?
Oh, you want both?
Ah, in an ideal world.
Well, yeah, the, the deck is for the people on the first floor and the roof decks for the people on the second.
The roof deck's only accessible from the second floor. So.
So there is no deck on the second floor?
No. And the roof deck is just towards the back of the property. It's just, it's just over the addition essentially. Trying to stay with the character of the architecture.
So what do the neighbors say?
Well, we don't know.
We may find out. I don't, you know, the one, the one towards Main Street is, it's an open lot. The ones across the street are apartments. The neighbor to the south side, I don't know. So.
Yeah.
You know, I don't understand the, the rules nowadays with, we have a new minimum parking requirement, but this, I don't know anything about minimum parking requirements for duplexes or how that plays. I mean, it looks like they have adequate parking, right? But do we hit a limit? What's the limit for duplexes nowadays?
Good question. So that's something new where I haven't had a chance to bring myself up to speed on, but definitely a question that we can, we can look at, get an answer. I don't know, I mean personally, seeing there's two, there's two driveways. There's not typically two driveways on most of these properties. That actually does add an extra parking space that already exists. It's almost like, it's almost like it was accounted for, like they said that there was, they thought it was an accessory apartment. It's almost like somebody had that thought and that was installed. But there is a curb cut, which means the city was involved at one point in time.
But there's only three bedrooms upstairs, right? There's no kitchen?
So again, we're going to talk illegal apartment now. There was a kitchen upstairs. So that's, there, there wasn't accessory.
So this floor plan is not required?
No. No, I'm not. I, you know, I don't want to show that. It was not legal. There were, so there were three bedrooms upstairs.
So there were three bedrooms and one of the bedrooms was a kitchen?
Yeah. One of the bedrooms had a little kitchenette in it. I'm assuming the person who lived there used it. That was their living area. They used the other bedroom. So I, I thought the parking was one, one space per unit, was my understanding from previous buildings.
It just changed recently to reduce it drastically, I believe. So that's like, I don't want to give an answer right now until I have a chance to look at it because of that change.
Okay.
But it might work to the favor that it is a big reduction.
Yeah. Like I said, I thought from two weeks ago, building inspector was one per unit, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's applicable, but the, the rules for ADUs is you have to add one parking space for accessory dwelling unit. So if you have, now the rules would be something like maximum of three parking and, but you have to add one, so it'd be, I guess, four if you have an ADU.
Well, if you remember last month.
That would be a maximum.
A ma, a maximum of six, right, for two?
Right, right.
I don't know, I don't want to say that is, is law, but I remember, if you remember that diagram, right?
With the cars lined up on the right side of the property.
Yes.
And they had six cars.
And there were six cars, and I think they said they, you know, needed to show what the maximum was. That was their intent. And I think it was six. But you know, I don't, again, I don't want to say that's the, that is what the requirement is.
Well, what is the amount of parking in the current driveways?
So you could technically get two cars on each side nose to tail?
It sounds like a sort of happy medium, really. Like you're not above the maximum of six, if that was what the law would require. And you'd have three in one if you use the old rules for a house and an ADU. So it sounds like the parking isn't a problem.
I, I don't think so. All right.
Unless they decide to try to extend the driveway and put in five parking spaces or something.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant's advisor?
Um, would you consider not putting the deck on the ground floor in the back and thus reducing?
If you'd like me to walk back up and consider that, I would. I, I would. I don't, like I said, the nice part about a deck, it has a railing on it and we will not get people visiting who might not be exactly sober. There are, there's, there's a bar right behind the house essentially. But if the board was more comfortable with just a patio, that would be fine.
It's legal to put a roof on, I mean a rooftop.
Deck?
Deck.
That Corey opines on that.
Corey, is it, is it legal to put a deck up there?
Another interesting question. We actually were talking about this before it came up. My understanding is it is, but the question I need to research is whether it needs to go through the architectural review board first, because it is technically a roof structure. And there is the, the possibility of, there's people on my roof. Can they look in my window next door? Does it fit with the architectural fit of the neighborhood? I, I believe the code provides the ability for the architectural review board to comment. I gotta look into it a little bit more, but I'm leaning towards the fact that that should be looked at as well. I'm not sure if that pertains, I mean, it does, but not so much to what we're doing here tonight for the variances, but something I think would most likely be looked at after you make your decision.
Well, we could always approve it.
Condition.
Conditionally, yeah.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application?
We are the neighbors.
Great. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Alexandra Cabrera. I'm here on behalf of Minerva Cabrera, the homeowner. Sorry.
Yeah.
Is it better?
That was for the recording.
Excellent.
Do I have to say it again?
No, you're good.
Darn it. Okay. Alexandra Cabrera, and I'm here on behalf of Minerva Cabrera. She is the homeowner.
And your address.
And my grandmother.
And your address.
Oh, Eighth Cliff Street.
So the, the direct house to the right?
Yeah, depending on which way you look at it, yes.
Sure.
Cabrera is to the right.
Yep.
To be fair, you know, whoever buys their property, nobody don't care what they do, as long as it's, everything's fine and not disturbing us. Throughout their endeavors of fixing apartments and also that lot, they use our driveway to go through it, which has a lot of heavy trucks and it's been pushing our driveway down, so it has been disturbing us a lot and causing a little bit of push underneath in the basement. On top of that, we also don't believe that the property was surveyed correctly. They had placed a stake last summer and saying that two feet from where the fence line is going towards the house is their property. And we got it surveyed and it is not there.
Excuse me, did you mean towards your house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I brought, I brought the thing.
Okay.
So, so they're saying it's, you're being adversely, what's the word for it?
Encroached.
Encroached.
Encroached upon.
Yeah.
For, for two feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have, you have essentially dueling surveys, is what you're saying?
Yes. Sure. I have no idea.
Your fence is on your property?
No, 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 no. So our fence, it's been there for a long time. I'm not 100% sure how long. It is to the property line, the front fence, and it stops. They removed the fence. They removed three trees because he, in assumption, when he first got it surveyed, he assumed that that is his property. We are glad the trees are gone, so we're not complaining about that. However, we are missing a fence and we just want to make sure that it gets surveyed correctly. Because we did go out and get it surveyed. We paid money for it.
Do you believe that the surveying that they did is wrong, incorrect?
I do. I went out there with a ruler.
Did you complain to the city or someone?
So I, I don't know how to do this. I'm just helping her. I was told to go get it surveyed. That is what we did. We have, we have, you know, proof and pudding. And then I walked over and noticed that the other stake on that property is two feet from the Bread Company parking lot. So I don't know if they just moved two feet towards the house. They just need to move it two feet back. And I think that, you know, everything will be fine surveying for that property.
I still don't understand what you just said.
I don't either.
You moved.
She's thinking that they, they started at a point two feet to the right.
Yes.
So the whole, the whole lot essentially on this survey, in, in her opinion, is shifted two feet to the right.
Yes. That, that's the only thing, that it looks like it happened.
You're saying the remedy would be if they moved everything two feet back?
Yeah, if they, when they initially surveyed it, if they just moved two feet over, they would have been correct and we wouldn't even need to get it surveyed. But because she strongly believed that it was not incorrect, we went out and got it surveyed and the guy did not ask for anything. He just went by however surveys go. And this is what he gave us. And it says where the stake is and where the fence goes.
Do you have that survey with you?
Yes.
Did they, so I think I heard you say they removed your fence.
Yeah, that was my next question.
They, did they talk to you about that prior to removing it?
It seems as though they believed it was their fence.
They removed the trees, ruined that, then he asked.
Yeah.
So they thought it was their trees?
Yes.
They thought it was their fence?
Yes.
But are, I guess, you're assuming accidentally because they believed it was on their property? Are you saying they nefariously went onto your property to remove?
Well, technically he did. If this survey is correct, technically he did. He technically removed our scent, our, our fence, the trees. Again, we were okay with that. Trust me. But we didn't get really anything back for that, like a fence to go back on the side. So that way, you know, it's just.
Did you talk to them? Did you ask for it?
So I haven't, we haven't seen him. He's always busy, vice versa, in and out a lot.
The fence you're talking about, it's the fence between the two properties? It's chain-linked?
It was.
It was.
It was. Did they take the whole thing down?
Oh, yeah.
Because they thought it was on their property, according to their servants?
Yes.
Well, we assume that's what they thought.
Yeah, and I'm assuming it's this.
This thing.
Yeah, I'm assuming if it's two feet off, that's probably two feet from the property line.
And you said something about your driveway?
Yes. It's a shared driveway. That's owned by somebody else, but we are able to access it. So it's like, I don't, I don't know if it has like a clause in it, but.
Is it from Cliff Street or is it from the back?
So it's, it's this, right here.
Oh, I am so sorry. I'm not, could you just bring it up here? Thank you. Even with my glasses on, that's not going to fly.
It's right here. So this is the shared driveway. We use it.
Okay, because this shows a garage there.
So that's on the other side. We're on this side.
Oh, so this driveway goes all the way back?
But this driveway, this driveway goes all the way back towards the Bread Company lot back there and also to the other properties that I believe he owns.
Don't, don't leave. So this survey, this bold line is the property line?
This one.
The bold one?
That's what.
The outer one is the property.
The Beacon Bread Company. It's on Main Street. She's saying it's that chain-linked fence was.
You're saying the chain-linked fence is the property line?
It's not near Fifth Street, is it?
Okay, you have a survey that shows.
Oh, it's on the other side of the street.
Now, tie this survey and show me how it shows the chain link is the property line.
So, right here, they took it, the chain link out, by the way.
Yeah.
Right here. It's 8.3 feet.
8.3, yeah.
So I took, measured it, and I walked to the corner of the house where it says, and I walked out, 8.3 feet.
So let's keep it in the same orientation. You have Cliff Street, Cliff Street. You're saying 8.3 from the corner. Goes to the property.
So looking at the other side.
The survey, yeah.
No, this side.
This side.
This side.
So these houses are like this, actually. Sorry.
Oh, this is your house?
Yeah.
This is your house?
Yes.
So you went 8.3 feet off your house to the property line? And you're saying 8.3 feet is where the chain link was?
So I think, yeah, right there. And then that's where it was.
And this driveway on their house goes all the way back?
It does, but also this one. This is the one they primarily use. They don't really use that one as much.
So this driveway goes all the way back and doesn't stop there?
No, there's no more fence here.
This is your house, correct?
So this side.
They're, they're using the driveway all, now I'm confused.
Yeah.
So she's implying that this driveway here on the right goes all the way back and doesn't stop there as the plan? So she's saying this driveway here stops. It doesn't, by, excuse me, she's saying this driveway here goes all the way back.
And it also goes back on your property too? No, it's not a driveway on your side?
So these are two different properties though, right?
Correct, so this is six, this is a, this one is correct. It goes behind the building to.
That one does.
Yep.
And where do you have a right of way on that driveway?
That's her property.
This is not her property.
No, no, the driveway is not her property.
This one is, this goes next.
You're just unable to drive.
This is the property of this.
But this survey, I mean, is the survey of her property?
It's really good. That's why I was getting...
It's really like this.
It's disorientation.
So you're challenging the integrity or the validity of this survey in front of us?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is what you're saying.
Yep.
That's all. I don't care, like you said, I don't care what, you buy your property, you do whatever you want.
No, that's not true.
Oh.
But it can't be...
Well, legally, you do whatever you want.
No, no, no. We have this zoning board of appeals, you have to come to us.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
So what do we do, boss?
Mm-hmm.
Do we, um...
No, no.
Do we require them to...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Wow.
What do you do in this situation? I think that would...
So, you know, we're not here to, right, so the issue is, we're not here to adjudicate property dispute, right?
Right.
So, but we don't know, we, it appears as though we have two different surveys with two different plots, which is a problem.
Well, we can't take it as a given.
No.
No, yeah.
Like the proposal we've gotten.
The other issue, potentially, is the lot size.
Of course.
The variance being granted is based on the lot size.
So if we're taking the lot down, that's what I was...
So, there's a concern to that respect as well. So, if you look to me for any input on this, typically, as I always, you know, sort of advise you guys, when there's disputes between property owners and neighbors, I encourage them to always try to resolve it on their own between meetings. This has implications inasmuch as it is the lot size, but this, to me, seems that a survey is a survey, right? It's as close to objective as property can be, right? It's basic measurement. So, it might be the case that the surveyors may need to speak to each other and figure out what is correct. The issue for the ZBA is you can't grant a variance assuming something is correct.
Right. We have to know that the square footage is what they're saying.
Yeah, and of course, at the end of the day, it's your decision, but this is my legal advice in this situation. You don't want to grant a variance that does not apply, for example.
Right.
All right. I think the applicant wants to speak again, so if you could...
Do you guys have anything else you want to bring up? You have the floor, so.
Cliff Street is a very small road, and if you put two families in there, you have at least four cars that have to be parked in front, and it would be really impossible.
Well, except they have, they have parking for four cars.
They would have the parking for four cars.
Also, I do remind you, the use is not...
At issue, yeah, right. But we did, we wanted to know.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And while you're talking, I looked it up real quick. It's a minimum of one, one parking spot per dwelling unit, not per bedroom, as you see typically in a lot of towns. So really, if you look at it, I think two parking spaces is the, is the minimum, and they're explaining that they have four, so they've, they've got more than what's needed. Maximum of six, you did say that, and that's correct, but a minimum is just one per dwelling unit.
But the one driveway is a shared driveway?
No.
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 They have two driveways that are... They have two driveways.
The driveway they're talking, you're thinking of Judy's on the other side.
On what other side? So there's one on this side and one on this side, right?
Yep, those are both exclusive uses.
For this?
Yep.
And where's the other one?
To the right of their house. This is owned by this lot, but they have an easement.
Oh.
To the right of their house.
Yeah, Cliff Street is interesting. I've sold houses on Cliff Street.
So before I ask for continuance. Good idea. So what we'll do is take the next month, hopefully, and resolve the issues of the lot line. As you said, it now goes to lot size, which now goes to setback, et cetera, et cetera. I just would like it noted that there was no objection, and certainly we'll come back up, about architecture, the addition, or concerns with what we're doing.
I don't think we said that.
I know.
No, from the...
Not from you guys.
Okay.
We never got to that.
All right. So with that, if I could ask for continuance.
If she's comfortable, email it so that you guys can see the survey.
I have a copy. I'm gonna give this to Mercedes. Yep, exactly. You don't mind just, all right, we're just, what I would like to do is just enter this into the record, so we'll keep this and just load it, upload it, so it becomes part of the city's record, if that's okay with you. Great. Thank you. All right.
He's asked for a continuance.
Yeah, in a German. You'd like in a German? Yeah, all right. Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions before, on any of the other stuff? Just for the process of streamline, streamlining, right? We don't want to come back next month. It doesn't sound like you guys had other questions, but let's just get everything.
Well, I'm just, I'm just presuming you didn't know about this alternative survey.
No, I didn't.
I, I think, I think, I mean, I don't want to prejudge anything. I think I need to know the correct facts before I...
Look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I'm not ready to...
Yeah. So with that being said, I'd like to adjourn the public hearing to next month's meeting. If, if you need longer, you'll let the zoning secretary know, so it can be noticed properly. Can you, Mercedes, what is the date of the next meeting?
I think it's the 18th again, for some strange reason.
March 18th. All right, so the next, just so you're aware, the next meeting is scheduled for March 18th, and so this will be put on for then, but if they're not able to have it resuraveled and re-noticed by then, then they'll have to ask for a further adjournment. So just, if you keep looking at the city's website, just so you're aware of when the next time we'll be having a public hearing on this. All right. No, 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 you don't, you don't have to do anything, and, I mean, I, I would encourage, I would talk to your surveyor and just, and encourage the surveyors to talk to one another. That would be my, you know, advice, as much as I can give it. All right. So, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I just want, I just want to say one more thing. If you're having an issue with heavy trucks in your driveway, and it's actually affecting your foundation, you're saying it's going into the basement, I would really look into that. I would first go to the building department, okay?
Why are they going on your property? Do they have your permission?
It's not in the front?
Yeah, come, yeah, if you're gonna, all right.
That's what I said. Any more questions?
Sure.
The driveway is owned by the person who owns the bread company, from my knowledge of all this stuff.
And this is to the, this is to the right of your house, so a full, a full...
You're looking at it, yes.
A full house away from their property, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
So they, the owner has more properties. One, two, I want to say the third lot in. He's renovating a whole bunch of a building over there.
Behind?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This particular owner?
Yes.
The same owner?
Yes.
So does he own, or do they own the driveway that you have an easement over?
Not, not this guy.
Uh-huh.
The person that owns the bread company owns that driveway.
Yep.
So it's not your driveway?
No, it is a shared driveway, but we are allowed to drive on it.
They got a right of way?
Yes.
Are you, are you able to park? Where is your parking?
Right behind the house. Two cars, they park there.
Got it. So you, you have ingress and egress, but you can't park in the driveway? You can, you can go, you can traverse the driveway to get to your parking, but you can't park a car in your driveway?
Yeah, pretty much.
Because you need to keep that open for...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yep. But they're, but they're using that driveway for their...
Yes.
For, yeah, okay.
Construction.
But, just so I understand, too, and so the record is clear, because I haven't seen that survey, so this is all conceptual. That construction is the construction on other properties, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing to do with the property issue at 6 Cliff Street?
So, he does both.
So you can, you can access 6 Cliff Street through this dr, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So he'll come around the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Dan?
No, I'd like to wait for the survey. I'm sure I'll have more questions then, when we discuss factors.
I agree, I agree. Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. So, can I have a motion for an adjournment for agenda item number one, please?
So moved.
I can have a second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Stowe, second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then George for miscellaneous business, agenda item number two. Can you just?
Yes.
Can you just review the dates on that, so we can?
Yeah.
Yeah, be clear?
So, this is an extension request for 11 Highland Place. You may recall, this came before the board at two meetings, April 16th, 2024, and June 18th, 2024. A vote was held, was had on June 18th, 2024, closed the public hearing, and the resolution to approve the variance was granted at that meeting. The resolution itself was dated July 2nd, 2024, and so the applicant had six months from the date of the resolution to basically, you know, the conditions that we always impose.
To get a building permit?
Which is obtain the building permit, right? And then all the other stuff that comes out of obtaining the building permit. So, given July 2nd, 2024, it would be January 2nd, 2025 that it expired on. They are requesting an extension. They have not, from what I understand, been able to obtain this building permit, yet they're still dealing with, you know, whatever circumstances they're dealing with. So this would be a six-month extension, but retroactive inasmuch as it's from that January 2nd, 2025 date. So it wouldn't be six months from today, it would be six months from January, when it expired. So, it would take it to July 2nd, 2025?
To be a year.
Yeah, a year, because it's two six-month extensions.
Corey, do you know if they've, if they've had any contact with your office on this? If they're working towards a building permit or anything?
So the only problem with that is that something Bruce would have handled?
Okay.
I've just been in his position for about a week now.
Congratulations.
Probably only another, another week more, but not, not that I know of. To find that out, I'd have to go through emails and whatnot.
Understood.
Do I explain one?
Go ahead.
Just give us one minute.
One minute.
Yep, and so, and what is the legal standard for extensions?
That's what I was just gonna get to, right? Courts are, they frown upon declining extension requests. And basically, the two things you want to focus on is, not necessarily to a lesser extent, but for lack of a better term, to a lesser extent, good faith effort by the applicant to actually get the work done, but more so, maybe a 51-49 kind of balance, the circumstances. Has there been a change in circumstances or a change in law applicable, right? So, what it comes down to is typically courts, you know, they frown upon declining to extend if there hasn't been a change in circumstances. When I say change in cer, I mean, you know, the lot's been destroyed, or something, something substantive change. But if we're talking about 10 years down the road and you're still asking for extension requests, then it's more feasible to say, well, you know, the person may not have done anything, or whatever the case may be. It's not unusual to grant even one or two or three six-month extension requests.
Right. And I know that we do that routinely.
It is timely. They, they're, they made the application after the January 2nd expiration, but you can retroactively extend. And again, it's not uncommon, especially, I guess, given the holiday season, sometimes things, you know, fall apart in terms of time.
But I guess the only question is, relative to the change in circumstance, did the law, did the parking law change affect this?
Does the parking law change, off the top of my head, does the parking law change?
The three maximums?
Prohibit this parking?
It would if someone, if she came to us today.
It would.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's the question at, at heart, is it not?
Yeah, that's the issue.
So, 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 I would need, I would want to know what was allowed under the old law? What did we give a variance to, and then what would be allowed under the new law?
I can tell you what you gave a variance to. The variance was granted, and there was a condition that the applicant shall remove the parking space in the existing driveway that is nearest to the existing dwelling, and shall demarcate same in a manner that is feasible and simultaneously indicative that there shall be no parking in that space. The existing driveway on the property in turn will be reduced from the three current spaces to two spaces. And then, that was for the existing, you know, there were three spaces next to the proposed circular driveway. The proposed circular driveway, I don't really remember how many cars were...
Maybe two, maybe two, so it would've been four.
I remember this now.
Two or three.
No, it was two.
It was two, so...
They were talking about parking two cars in it, but it was large enough, I recall.
Now, Bruce said it would hold two cars.
Yeah, I think...
It should be four, total.
Yeah, but the circular driveway would hold two cars.
Correct. Yep. So, and so what, what, what is the legal maximum now under the law? Three, right?
Three.
Right.
And, and I want to make a point, which was that we are also giving the variance not just for the number of parking spaces, but the fact that it was a circular driveway in front of the house between the, the front door of the house and the street, right, which is against the zoning.
Well, that was the variance, right?
Right, that's the variance, right? I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, there was no...
It wasn't just the parking number of cars.
Yeah, well, correct, and there was not a need for a variance from that.
Right.
At that point.
At that point.
But in theory, there would be.
Now.
Now, right. So, okay.
And so, the original variance was the parking in front of the house, but now we also have this concern.
Well, we do, we may.
Yeah, we may.
Sure, sure.
Conceivably. If someone came to us today, we would have both issues.
Do we have to consider it as of today, or do...
But are we reevaluating our vote, given today's circumstances, or are we just looking at the circumstances as to why there was a delay?
Both. And so that's, that's what, that's what I believe, if I'm, if I understood George correctly, it's, it's essentially, the, the legal standard for granting extensions are change in circumstance, which there is, there's a change in the law, and two is good faith effort. So we're gonna let the applicant...
I know about the good faith part.
Right, yeah. So we're gonna let the applicant speak to her good faith efforts that she's made, and then we can make a decision.
Okay.
If you'd like to, to do that.
Hi, everyone. I was told by my architect, actually...
Name?
Oh, sorry, Jody McRido, 11 Highland Place speaking.
Hello.
I actually didn't think that, I, I didn't realize that the, the parking law had changed, but I thought that that didn't matter, because it's a variance extension and not a request for a variance, but I'm not sure how that works. We've been working on this. There was a financial difficulty because the escrow was a little bit different and more costly than we had expected it to be because of the postponement to the meeting, so I ended up owing an additional $560 to the original escrow when I had kind of anticipated getting some money back to help pay for the driveway. And then I paid another $500 for tonight. So it's, it's been a lot more costly for that reason, and then on top of that, you know, we kind of had an idea in our mind of exactly how we wanted to design this, when the board granted the variance and said to give back the other parking spot, that kind of changed the whole thing in our head of what we wanted to do. So we actually spent So we actually spent more money, um, we hired an architect and a landscape designer to look into how to make that as nice as possible, because, you know, we want it to be pretty for the neighborhood and everything. Um, our architect then said that we might need to hire an engineer because there are some grading issues, because we've had some leaks from the houses that were built across the street from me, because I now have driveways pointing down toward my house where there used to be a whole lot of trees and grass and, and forest, basically, so that all kind of changed everything that we were doing. So there's, there's been a lot of additional expense and additional work that's gone into it that kind of.
Led to the delay?
Yeah, that kind of pushed everything back, because we, we really wanted to have this done by the winter. Right now, you know, when it snows, we've got cars all over our front lawn, because it's, it's definitely not as nice as it will be once the driveway is done. What's up?
So in the intervening period, though, the things you've done have been mostly talking with people and, and planning and redrawing plans and so on, but you haven't, for example, actually taken away some of the parking next to your house that was part of the, the, the grant we gave you, the zoning.
No, we're gonna do everything at once, just to, to make it more cost-effective, because this has been costing so much more money than we thought it would.
I'm, I'm just trying to get at, like, good faith efforts on your part to actually move forward, that's all.
Yeah, well, I just figured the actual work would get done at the same time, we just wanted to design it first so that, because, you know, taking the parking, like, you, you just, we just want to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing. So we, we didn't want to start doing anything until we had our, our plan and knew what we wanted it to look like.
If they took the existing parking they have now away, before they put in the new, they'd have no place to park.
Yeah, but that's, that's an interesting question, because that's something that's gonna hit other homeowners in the city when they come to the board and want to make a change, and the board will point out, oh, well,